Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. At seven o'clock. The meeting is being recorded for anyone who came in late, just so you know that. And we basically for under the rules and guidelines for doing these virtual meetings, what we first start out with is a roll call of the members of the board present. So I'm going to start out with Mr. Kindermans.
Present.
Mr. Paya.
Present.
Mr. Smith, present. Okay. The first matter before the meeting is Nina Hackle and Ira Goldman for special permit under section 7.1.3 and 11.6 of the bylaw to demolish an existing 3,051 square foot non-conforming dwelling and construct a 4260 foot non-conforming dwelling at 61 Bartlett Hill Road. We're going to start out with, as we always do with the applicant's presentation, just a reminder that folks, as they do participate, it's just like town meeting. So we'd like to have you start with your name and address so that we can get that capture that for the record. So who's speaking for the applicant?
I am Nina Hackle. And the address we current, do you want the one we currently live in or the?
Sure. Yeah, go for it.
130 Monson Road in Concord and we bought this lovely house in 61 Bartlett Hill Road. It's a bit, you know, rundown and our thought was to use the foundation to build a new home on it. And I'm really excited about the neighborhood. It's so nice. What we didn't realize when we bought it was that it was a non-conforming lot, that it actually has 11.4 on the right-hand side of the lot. And so when we bought it, we thought that we just kind of put a house on top of it and keep the foundation, save a lot of money. And then we found out as we were doing the permit that it actually didn't fit the lot. So it's not in good shape. It would cost a lot to fix. So it's just a little bit tight on the right side. The new house is actually the, the house that's there is two stories high on the right side and we're only going to do a one story on the right side. So in actuality, it's going to be nicer for our neighbors, not the other way around. If we put in the new house, it's definitely gonna, you know, this is the worst house on the street. And when we're done, it's going to be a beautiful home. And, you know, we're just hoping to get a special permit so that we can, you know, build this lovely house on this home, on this lot.
Yeah, just to summarize, as Nina said, the house is currently non-conforming for a side setback.
I'm sorry, Mr. Goldman, but you actually got, we have to actually have your name too and address.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Ira Goldman, also 130 Monson Road in Concord. So just, just to summarize, the, the house is currently non-conforming on the side setback. And we're not proposing to increase that non-conformity and we're not going to create any new non-conformities. The massing of the new addition, the master bedrooms suite is well set back from the lot line. The reconstructed house will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing house to the neighborhood. In fact, the new house will be a vast improvement to the property in the neighborhood. And in the discussions we've had with our neighbors, they welcome the project. We're happy to hear that, you know, a, a new house with, with, with modern standards and well up and, and, and new upkeep would be built on the house. So that's, that's where we are.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goldman. So we'll start out with questions from the, or any questions or clarifications from the board and then we'll open hearing to public comment. So board, board members.
So, so it's a, it's a conforming lot, but there's a non-conforming media with the setback. Is that right? I just want to make sure I was clear on. Okay. Thank you.
And, and you mentioned that you talked to the neighbors. Are, did you get anything written from the neighbors that say that they like it or don't like it?
No, we didn't get anything written. They just, they're happy. I mean, actually they're lovely neighbors. We're very excited. And they're, they're happy for us to build a house. There's no problems whatsoever.
You know, obviously it was advertised in the, in the local publication and I, I'm not aware that there are any, you know, any interveners.
And, and as I think you said, so this is not a situation, and I'll go to Ray too, but this is not a situation, Ray, where we're increasing the size of the house by more than 50%. This is, this is just a straight that you're building a house on the existing foundation and as a consequence, you will, you have inherited the site, the setback problem, right?
That's correct, Jim.
All right. Any other things from the board? We'll open it up to the public. So, pardon me?
I said, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, great. So just open it up to pub, for public comment. And then raise hands, raise, try to find this one way or the other. Any public comment? I see.
David Lamersdorf.
Ah, yes, Mr. No, Ms. Lamensdorf. Or maybe David's back there too. I think you're on mute, ma'am.
Joyce Lamensdorf, 98 Bartlett Hill. And he can speak for himself if he wishes. It came to our attention that this property has been, has moved along and the zoning board of appeals meeting was tonight. And so I was curious about it and started researching it and spoke to the neighbors, the budding neighbors and found it interesting, although they don't appear to be on the, 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 the call right now. One of them is out of town. But I'm surprised that they didn't learn about how to be on this call, the way Heather provided me some excellent information. And I can't account for the others, but when I asked them if they had seen this new plan, they said they had not. And I do not want the, the board to be misled by the fact that the neighbors have approved what you're showing. I'd like to give a little context. We've lived on this street for 36 years. There are some older neighbors who've been here longer than us, maybe 50 or 60 years. And this is a spare, very special street. I think that the, the new owners are going to be happy here. But I, there are a couple of things that poked my interest on the application. One of them is referring to the property as a decrepit eyesore. They found this house appealing and they bought it. The previous owners were very favorable neighbors to our community on the street. And if they, if anyone in the board had ever entered this house, they would have seen a beautiful home that is run, owned by an interior decorator. And it was very special. Unfortunately, age crept up on them, as it does all of us and will for us one day. And there were things about the house that needed attention, like the stairs. They did put on a new roof a few years ago, so I wouldn't call that decrepit. And there were other things that they did not have time to attend to. But I can say that it wasn't 10 years that the house fell into disrepair. I think that the new owners have all the rights to describe this house in the way they want to build it. But degrading and being disrespectful to the previous owners is not the way we want to live in this community. And I take exception to it. The just a second. Yeah, I have to say that the pictures of the house that are presented to the zoning board are really ugly. This house, when it was on the market and prior, was well-maintained. Had landscape service, had lovely trees and plantings. And soon after the house was purchased, the owners came and cut down all the foundation plantings or the trees on both sides and in the back and left it in the state that you are seeing today. And left the neighborhood us for six months with this terrible eyesore. I am concerned that they would want to do this to our community. You know, if they're ready to, to build the house, that's fine, but this has been an awful eyesore and please take that into consideration. The one thing that you have not spoken about that is an issue, a potential issue is the swimming pool. What about the swimming pool? What about the fencing that's going to be required for the swimming pool? And it's very close to the property line on the east side. Unfortunately, those people aren't here to speak for themselves and they should be. And maybe they've written in their opinion. But I just think that it's, it's important for us to really think about what that pool is going to do to the neighborhood and whether we really need it here. Most of us swim at Walden Pond and other ponds and other swimming holes. And, you know, one of the nice things about our street is that the landscape is really open and the properties are all cared for beautifully. And I'd hate to see fencing going up. In fact, when we bought on the street 36 years ago, we were deeded and that we were not allowed to build fences. So I don't know where that stands today, but I think it's important to point that out. And I think I've made all my points. I don't know if David wants to say anything.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lamens. Thank you, Ms. Lamensdorf.
Can I respond just to, to make sure?
Yeah, you, you can in a second. Ms. Hackle, I'm just going to ask if there are any other people first and then we'll take it all at once, but I don't believe there are any. I'm not seeing anyone else. So Ms. Hackle, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry that we wrote decrepit. There, there is.
Didn't, it didn't say decrepit. It says it, it was an exceedingly poor state of repair.
Right. And it just, that's a perception of what people feel, but the outside of the house has termites and other things, but neither here nor there, the, you know, just so that you know, the trees, we actually, we thought that we were getting a permit in, you know, in September, we did not realize we needed to go through this whole process. And so we were cutting down the trees and we spoke to both of the neighbors because the neighbors wanted the trees out because the trees were hitting our house and their house. So that we were not, we didn't do that with not only not neighbors' consents, they were actually there with us to do it. And we did, and the problem that's happened for the neighborhood and we're extremely sorry about that was that we did think that this project was going to be starting much sooner than it did. So we were just trying to prep it so that we could come in and start working on it. So I'm very sorry about that. And the pool is just an idea of where a pool could fit. We're only at the boarding zone, the, this zone, not for the pool. It is just for the house.
And if I could just add, you know, I guess people can have different perceptions, but when we walk the property and when we walk the property with, with the landscape of people, actually many, many trees were down, had fallen down. They, the, the trees had not been, you know, melt well-maintained and pruned near the property, near the reformatory branch in the back. There were so many downed trees. It was really the house, and I'm sorry, I have to disagree with you. It was almost a jungle. So to say that it'd been, yes, the front yard was landscaped, was maintained by a landscaper. But the surrounding trees, especially in the back, were, were just, were just wild and, and, and completely run, you know, run over. And as Nina said, our side neighbors, now, I agree, we did not show this, the two neighbors on the side, specific building plans. But we did discuss with them the fact that we were going to the town for a permit, that we needed a permit because of the existing non-conformance and that we plan, and what we planned to do. So no, we didn't bring architectural plans to them, but we did discuss with both of them. And they were both comfortable with, with our, with what we were proposing to do in general. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. I have a question, Mr. Goldman or Ms. Hackle. I'm trying to make sure I understand what we have here. So I'm just looking at the site plan. I don't know Heather, if you might want to pull that up or not, but it, so the, it has a proposed pool, a proposed porch, a proposed addition. Is that, is that all having to do with the original, your original idea that you would add on to the thing? Or is that all part of the, I'm just trying to understand what you're actually trying to build here. That's all.
The, if you look, if you go back to that one that you just did, the, the building is the existing and then the addition is in pink with the proposed porch. And then there's a deck and that's all that's being built. The lower stuff was just something the architect said, oh, if you want to put a pool, this is what you would do.
So the proposed upper deck and the proposed lower deck and the pool are not part of this, right? Is that what you're saying?
It's the lower deck and the pool is not part of this.
Okay, the upper deck is, okay, got it. All right.
But this proposed addition is part of it. Correct.
Yes. Yep. No, absolutely. We understand. All right. Other comments?
But sort of on the right side of this, of the existing home, it looks like, oh, it looks like a one-story from the front. With a big, tall roof, but towards the, towards right, but towards the right that, that, you know, there is a two-story element right behind the chimney there, right behind the chimney. That's going to become a one-story?
Yeah.
Element now?
Yeah, it's one story now on the right-hand side. We had to go extremely low because there was something to do with another rule. So we had to go low in the front. But it's just one story. It's in line up with their one-story garage.
Okay, okay. So it's sort of symmetrical.
It's symmetrical.
But in minutes, you know, so the encroachment into the setback is, that structure is lower, right?
Correct.
It's the same encroachment, but a lower set, but a lower profile.
Right, right.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
It's Joyce Lamensdorf again. So to me, and forgive me for asking this, I don't have a lot of experience with this. It looks like, from the front, the, the middle part looks like a colonial, somewhat like a colonial. And then on the right east side, I mean, the interior of that, that space is going to be a cathedral ceiling. So I don't know, I don't understand where, where the roof will come down and it'll only look like a first floor. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then it'll have windows on the up, on, on the top part. Is that how I'm reading it? A little strange. You know, I, I, I also have a comment when you showed the, the plan. You know, if, if neighbors or other people are looking at a plan like this and the new addition looks like a proposed piece of addition and everything else listed as proposed, the pool and the, and the porch and one thing and the other. It would be better for us to understand that, you know, the, the, the master bedroom in the back is not proposed. It's actual, it's part of the new construction.
It is proposed.
It is. Yeah.
But everything's. The question is whether it's going to, ma'am, the question is whether it's going to be built or not. So I think that the, the plans that they have shown us for the house, which are the thing that we're really focusing on here.
Yeah.
Because the pool is, whether it goes in or not, the pool is not encroaching the setback. One of the things that we have to remember here is that this is not a planned residential development where we have, where we look at the design plans of the house. This is a situation in which they're going to, they're putting a house on an existing foundation that is otherwise conforming, whatever any one of us thinks about the design, it's, it's conforming as to setback and as to the lot size in all respects, except for one, which is at the far right-hand side of the house. Instead of being a 15-foot setback, there's an 11.4-foot setback. And the argument of the play, of the, uh, argument of the applicant here is that, and the thing that we're looking at as a board is whether it is more important in this case to have, maintain the 15-foot setback. Or if it makes its reasonable, given the, the neighborhood, et cetera, to have the house built on the existing foundation and maintain the setback that, that was, that was less than 15 feet to begin with, but nevertheless, they're not proposing that, like they go down to 10 feet or to five feet or something like that. So that's, I mean, what we're facing right now is not a design issue. You know, this satisfies, I think Ray can confirm this satisfies all issues as to height as to square foot, you know, the square footage is not in excess of 50% more than what the original house was. So we're not, so, so that doesn't fall into a thing that needs a special permit. So this, the single question here for all of that is the setback.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? All right, hearing now, and I'm going to close the public hearing. And now we're at the stage where the board will do their analysis consideration. Who wants to start?
Theo, it looks like you're getting ready to say something. It's just like, it's like Ravi or I, who can hold their breath the longest. No, I, I, I do think there's an argument to be made here that, you know, reducing the height of the, that part of the structure that's in the setback is an improvement to the neighborhood, right? So again, this, and the applicant could just lob three foot or so off that side of the house and then they, you know, could build whatever they want. They wouldn't be here. So I, I, I am inclined to be to be voting in favor of this project. Just for those, for those two, two reasons that it's, the encroachment is minimal and it's, it's it's also an improvement on, in the it's an improvement on the non-conformity and make, and you know, my mind, I think it does make it less non-conforming once this is rebuilt. So that's where I stand, but I
Yeah, I agree that, you know, the non-conformity is certainly not getting worse. There's going to be less over the, there's going to be less in this house in the setback than there was before. And certainly, you know, avoiding digging an entirely new foundation is a reasonable you know, motivation for, for trying to stay on that same footprint. So I, I'm I'm also in favor of, of this. I think it's, you know, I, I don't see anything else that says detriment to the neighborhood here.
Right. So, right. And then actually make the point, just staying on a, staying on the foundation. It does mean that front of the house doesn't move forward, which it, which it could, right? If you want to build a new foundation and keeping sort of the same streetscape, same profile, I think is, uh, there's a lot to be said for that.
Yeah, one of the things that Theo, that you mentioned that I think is really important here is that as we established early on, the lot is otherwise conforming. So if they were willing to to meet all of the setbacks, the, the far calculation suggests that they could build a 6,200 square foot house, which is, you know, 50% more than, bigger than the house that they're providing. And, and I think would actually be a bigger, the bigger detriment to the neighborhood because I think it would be outsized compared to the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. So I think that we need to be thoughtful here about the fact that there are very few levers that we, that we have in front of us. This is, is really a single question. And if, and if we said no, then they're going to go back to their architect and build something 15 feet off. And, and the only person who's going to look at it is a building inspector to make sure that it's meets, meets the height and height requirements and setback requirements. So I'm, I, I look at this and I think that it's a very consistent with our previous permits that we've granted in similar situations where the setback is not, is not increasing the non-conformity of the setback is reducing it somewhat in terms of the massing on the setback. Creating a house that is that at least in size and, and sort of location is consistent with, with, with other size, et cetera, of homes in the area. Happy to hear a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the special permit for Nina Hackle and Ira Goldman on the section 713 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to demolish the existing 3,051 square foot non-conforming dwelling and reconstruct a 4260 square foot non-conforming dwelling at 61 Bartlett Hill Road with the finding that the new home is not more detrimental to the neighborhood as the, the existing home. Anything else? Yep.
Yeah, that's it. We'll add normal conditions. Okay. Thank you, Fatih. Mr. Kindermans?
Yeah, approved.
Mr. Mr. Paya. Hi, Mr. Smith. I thank you very much. Thank you to everyone, including Ms. Lederman's Lemensdorf, please, for, for your participation. We really appreciate. This is a good process. We thank you very much for participating. Thanks to all.
Thank you to the board. Thank Ray in particular. He was very helpful in this process.
Good to hear. All right. Next matter before the board is, I'm going to go find my agenda. Next matter before the board is, uh, I'm going to go find my agenda here. Sorry. This is a problem with doing too many of these, having too many electronics and not enough paper. Here we go. All right. This is Justin Armello for a special permit under section 6.2.13 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 93 square foot dormer, which causes the site to exceed the maximum floor area ratio by 66 square feet at 314 Thoreau Street. And just in case there's anybody in the audience who's not aware of all these rules, the zoning bylaw operates off of, uh, off of two sort of different measurements for the size of a house. The one that we typically deal with is if a house is on a non-conforming lot and wants to, and the owners want to build a home that's, uh, or add to the home and increase the size by more than 50%. They have to come to us for a special permit. The rules of the special permit are essentially that you that it goes to the issue of how it fits into the neighborhood. It's not detrimental to the neighborhood, et cetera. In the second type of measurement is the, is more recent zoning bylaw goes to what we call the maximum floor area. Maximum floor areas in zoning B and C, at least I think it might be an A, but, but Ray can help me if it isn't. It's not double A. Huh? All the districts. Well, except for double, double A is impossible. But there is a basically a calculation that's done based on the size of the lot and a ratio that's made. And the home is not, no home, whether it's a conforming lot or non-conforming lot is supposed to exceed that. In the town of Concord, we sort of have two kinds of situations. We have some homes that have were bigger, particularly in areas in my Concord Center, for example, with small lots and large homes. We have homes that were already bigger than the maximum floor area. And we're essentially grandfathered into this rule. I mean, they, they can't get bigger themselves, but they are already exceeded. And then we have other homes that are like this particular situation in which the home was very close to the maximum floor area ratio. And so what we're talking about here is a relatively slight change to the home. But it now will exceed the gross floor area. The section that covers this, just so we set the ground rules, the section that covers this has a additional requirement that is different from the sort of typical plan. And that in section two, six point two point 13, I think, I hope, is that the words say that the board can grant relief from the maximum floor area ratio. If we find that a literal interpretation of this requirement would be unreasonable because there is no reasonable alternatives available. And the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood. So the focus perhaps of this discussion is going to be looking, I think, at the whether the literal application requirement would be unreasonable because there was no reasonable alternatives. So it just sets the ground rules, I think, for what we're doing. And somebody, Mr., I see Mr. Mellow out there. Are you going to be speaking, sir?
Yes, that's correct. I will present the, the design approach here and, and what we explored.
But and you are, and you'll start out with who you are. Yes.
I'm Justin Mello. Thank you. I'm Justin Mello. I work for doing Schmidt Kern's Architects. I was hired by the, the Doing family at 314 Thoreau to help design the changes to the home here. And before I, before I present the design material, the homeowner Tyler Doing would like to do a little introduction of what's, what's driving some of the changes that they'd like to make.
Sure. I'm not seeing a name, Mr. Doing, but are, uh, there you are. Okay, great. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Tyler Doing. I'm the resident at 314 Thoreau Street. My wife and I and four kids live at 314 Thoreau Street. I'm a lifetime resident of Concord and Carlisle. My father, Chip Doing, was an architect in town for over 30 years and has been in front of the board many times over the years. Though it's been a while. And he's helped us with our house. Now his firm, DSK, Justin and Sina are helping us with it. My wife and I have been raising our four kids in town for the last 13 years, first on Hubbard Street. And for the past nine years in our current house at 314 Thoreau Street. We love being in town, even with the smaller lots, and we love our current house. But it are, as our family has grown, we felt we've needed a bit more room to expand. Our two sons have shared a bedroom over the past nine years. My oldest son's now 13 and we just feel they need their own space. So the catalyst for this project is to move our daughter, who's 15, up to the third floor. So our two sons can each have their own bedroom. And in order to do this and accommodate a proper closet and bathroom on the third floor, we need to add a dormer off the back of the house. So it's not, not very visible, not visible from the street, not very visible to anyone. And we've worked closely with DSK to minimize the expansion need and just think we've done that successfully. And I'll let Justin detail the project.
Thank you, Mr. Doing. Okay, Mr. Mellow?
So I'd like to share my screen to walk you through what we have for the.
That'd be great.
And I'm going to stay a little bit focused on the, on the third floor, but as a, a high level kind of overview here. The first, first floor, there are no changes to the, to the footprint, as mentioned, on the second floor. As Tyler noted, we're really just redistributing some interior walls for a couple of the bedrooms there to help where the shared bedroom was larger. There was a small bedroom on the front. So we're kind of equalizing that wing of the house where they also share a bathroom. We're proposing that there's a second floor added to an existing bay window there to create a window seat. But that will be a bench seat with a relatively low ceiling. So it won't doesn't contribute to the floor area of the building. So really the, the changes are on the third floor up here where there's an office space on one side and then this bedroom, existing bedroom here. And that's where we're proposing to add the dormer. And I will switch here to this plan. We've, we've changed orientations. So Thoreau Street is out on the, the right-hand side here. This is the existing plan on the left and our proposed changes here on the right. So the goal here, you know, is to, as Tyler mentioned, uh, help this, this upstairs really function appropriately. You know, our overarching theme here in the house is to, you know, redistribute the bedrooms and the bathroom configurations to be appropriate for the size of this house in this neighborhood. To have a house of this size in this part of Concord that can't appropriately accommodate four children doesn't feel like a good fit. So we're working here to make sure we can redistribute. You know, equitably in the house, you know, nobody's, nobody's getting a, their own sort of bathroom suites, bedroom suites here. We're really, there's a lot of shared bathrooms going on and whatnot. So we we're trying our best to kind of make this all work. And so what's happening on the third floor, you know, is the office space upstairs, which is heavily used now with a lot of work from home going on. We'll need to sort of share this bathroom space. But as Tyler mentioned, with a 15-year-old daughter, using this, she needs to be able to close this down to have privacy. So what we have proposed here is that we have two, two access points to the bedroom, one, one from the hallway and one from the bedroom that will allow us, will allow the daughter to close this off, to make it private when she needs it. But we'll also allow access from the office to the bathroom in, you know, the daytime and whatnot. And in order to do this, we really needed to get more headroom under here. This, this sloped area was quite tight and it's kind of a head knocker. And in order to get this door access from the hall through here and get the fixtures to fit in the bathroom, we really needed to bump the footprint out to make this bathroom bigger. And we're also providing an additional larger window to this bedroom here. Currently, the front dormer has a very small window that's very low to the floor. So this is, this is the only kind of conventional sized window in the existing bedroom. So this, this window here is really contributing natural light to the room. And we explored the idea of making this dormer smaller. I think it feels balanced with the dormer on the other side of the building. And trying to make it smaller really wouldn't have allowed us to accommodate the program that we would need up here. Because the closet space wouldn't fit in this zone where, where we would be under the slopes and we would be interfering with the door and the access that's needed there. So this layout achieves the goal to kind of redistribute to balance things. And it also does that while we feel does not, as, as the bylaws say, doesn't you know, create any alteration to the building that's not consistent with the neighborhood. So we avoided, you know, any changes to the front of the house that would be apparent from Thoreau Street, favoring the dormer on the rear side where it would be less visible. So if I jump to a view here of the existing house from Thoreau and this here is Walden, Walden Terrace here, running back along the house. When we show this with the dormer added on, you can just catch a little hint of that dormer in the back from Thoreau Street. And if you were to kind of come up Walden Terrace, as the next few shows, you have to be in a very particular spot here to see the dormer. So that's the existing and here's the proposed showing there that it's, it's not a very prominent spot there on the house. So it doesn't really contribute anything negative to the, to the character of the neighborhood and feels, feels consistent in our view. So I think I'm happy to elaborate anywhere you'd like to, if you have questions or things like that, or revisit material. That covers the major points.
Uh, any questions from the board?
Not for me. This was pretty clear.
Well, I, I, I think Justin, you had mentioned walking through it is sort of, were there alternatives that were considered? And I think that's kind of an important part of what we need to hear to decide that it would be unreasonable to do this any other way. Were, were there other kind of designs or approaches that you looked at and, and realized they wouldn't work here?
Sure, I can, I can elaborate a little further. I mean, I think so the, you can see the existing layout has a, a bathroom and a closet here in this configuration. Now, obviously, to, to try to make the bathroom work, this bathroom that exists is a, is sort of a three-quarter bath. The shower is very tight. You're under the slope to use the toilet. You can't get a full-size vanity in there. So the, the existing bathroom is quite cramped and not really a comfortable bathroom for, for a house like this. Not to mention that access from the office then would require you to sort of invade privacy and go through the bedroom to get there. So in order to make this bathroom appropriate for the house, we needed to grow that bathroom. And if we grow through that bathroom at all in this direction to try to get access from the closet, we, we, or from the hallway rather, you know, if we swapped the location of bath and closet, the, the bathroom had to get so big that the closet wasn't usable. And you really couldn't fit the fixtures in and fit the doors, you know, the access from the hall and the access from the bedroom meant all the fixtures would have had to bed under the slope, under the low part of the ceiling here. So there was no way to really distribute those fixtures and distribute the room appropriately that way. So we, and we really couldn't take any space, any space out of the bedroom, because as you can see, the, the bedroom, these knee walls are three and a half feet tall where we're cut here. So it's already quite tight to sit the bed head wall under there. And if we took any space out, we'd be compromising the window here, which we couldn't really do and compromising the footprint of the bedroom. So we kind of had to hold this line, which is what we did here. And so that really only left us with the opportunity to push out in this direction. And as I, as I alluded to, if we, if we tried to keep the dormer only the width of the bathroom, it meant that the closet would have to kind of come in here in order to be out from under the slope enough to get usable closet, which would interfere with the, with the bedroom door or with the bathroom door from this side, which would kind of defeat the whole goal here, which was to be able to pass through, be able to have the two access points from that bathroom.
Yeah. And one thing I would add is it looks like a fairly sizable space, but that peak area, you kind of have to duck, duck into that. It would be appropriate to put a chair, a chair under there or something. But you really can't do much else under that area, the ceiling.
This, this valley beam here, like I said, with a, with a three, three and a half foot knee wall, this valley is a head knocker unless you go out and way around this. So you really, you really can only walk into this dormer here down the middle of it. It's, it's basically a three-foot wide section that's got a six-foot eight ceiling in there. It's, it's quite tight. So it, while it might add a little bit of light and a little bit of footprint, it doesn't add a whole lot of usable space to the room, which is challenging.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
Did you, um, I mean, you're already in a situation where you, I know this is crazy, but we're supposed to be thinking of alternatives. You know, you have a, you have some six-foot eight ceilings in there. If it was six-foot seven ceiling, it wouldn't count in your number, right?
Hmm. Correct. Yeah. So but I'm not, I'm not clear what the.
Well, I mean, I think that, that, you know, the challenge here is, is that this, this is a very, we're going to hear from the public, but this is a very challenging. This is a very challenging approval to provide. I mean, in a, in a gross statement, a gross, gross way, it's, you could, you could say that a, you know, 5,000 square foot house, you know, is it really impossible to find a way to put in four bedrooms in an office, right? And so I, I hear what you're saying, but that's but I'm just, I'm just suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that in order to overcome this, you know, we've got a, you know, we, we have a standard that says that it is that the literal application would be unreasonable. So we have to, we have to figure out that that not holding you to the, the gross floor or the maximum floor area would be unreasonable. So that, that's our, that's our issue here.
And I guess I would say the 5,000 square feet is a bit misleading because it includes some space that's above the garage and not only accessible from the first floor. It was an old sort of in-law apartment. So you'd have to be comfortable with one of your kids sort of being off on their own as opposed to in the main space, which we're just not comfortable with. So that, that's another issue that the total square footage makes the house seem bigger, more, more, like there would be more options than there actually are.
Yeah, we really had to work within, you know, the kind of core front box of the house here. You know, the main, the main bed suite occupies, occupies this area. And as Tyler mentioned, the space back here is, is only access from that one, that one first floor stair over there. And it's an over the garage space. There's some height changes and, and things up there as well. So really, it is a, it is, I feel unusual for a house of this size to have this kind of limitation and, and not, as we said, be able to accommodate this many bedrooms. But really, we are, we are sort of restricted to working within this front center box here to kind of make all of these things work on the second and the third floor. So it does become quite challenging. And, and as it stands, um, on the second floor level, you know, these two bedrooms will be sharing this one bath. And this room here is really, other than the master suite, is the only bedroom that has its own dedicated bathroom and closet. Otherwise, you're sharing happening here between these two bedrooms on the second floor. And then sharing will be happening with the bathroom on the, on the third floor already. So as I mentioned, it's, it's not as though we're proposing all these. So as I mentioned, it's, it's not as though we're proposing all these bedrooms, get in suite bathrooms and whatnot. There's already compromises being made in the, in the plan and the program of the house to even accommodate what we're trying to do here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mello. Any other questions before I open up the, for public comment? So, let's see.
I guess if, you know. The other question I had then is on the, on that third floor, was there consideration of switching the bedroom and the office? So that if you, you know, nobody has to pass through a bedroom to get to the bathroom. But if you pass through an office, that's sort of less intrusive. And less likely to happen during, during daylight, you know, during working hours.
Yeah, I guess the challenge there, so the, the office has one window here and then the windows in this dormer. And we can't, we can't take the hallway and we can't take this dormer on the front because this dormer is too low to really fit any program on the sides, especially we don't want to impact the front view of the house. So the only, the only way I could see that working is if we took, took some of that office space to create a bathroom in there. But then that compromises the size of this room and it really only has one window. Also, there's, there's some existing plumbing roughs over in this area. I'd have to explore what would be involved in trying to get plumbing down through the building on that side. It could be challenging because we only have those bedrooms below. The other bathroom sits, sits over under this lower area.
All right, no, no other questions from me, Jim?
Hey, thanks, Paddy. Thanks.
Robbie. All right, let's open it up to the public, public comment. I've got very little boxes over here, so I see the hand of Mr. Botfield. I hope, at least that's what your box says.
That is correct. Martin Botfield, forty-seven Walden Terrace.
Mr. Botfield.
I've been a neighbor of the doings for a decade or so. It's their wonderful family. We fully support them making this change to their home. It's a very minor incursion of the far limit. It doesn't change the height of the building, the, the footprint of the building. It doesn't change the character except in a positive way in our view of either the house or the neighborhood. But it certainly does make the house far more livable for the family, and so we support doing that. You know, when bylaws are written, the, the intentions are generally good. But like all rules and all laws, it's dependent on, you know, human wisdom to interpret them in a way that makes sense. And I'm sure that no one wants to chase a family out of Concord Center to a, a, a larger plot of land elsewhere. We certainly don't. And we, we hope that the, the, the board can find a way to, to improve this for them. Because I do think it is in the best interest of their neighbors, of their family, and for our community at large. The character of the community is not just the structure of the buildings, it's the people who inhabit them. And the character of our community has certainly benefited by having the doings in that home.
Thank you, Mr. Botfield. Anybody else? It's like several people are from the same architectural firm. I'm sorry if I'm reading this right. Oh, Ms. Dowsett, Dowsett?
Yes. Hi, I'm Peggy Dowsett from thirty Walden Terrace. I am a direct abutter of the doings. And I am in favor of them, if you are, with going ahead with this slight change. I think it fits in nicely. I think that it's not significantly going to change the way I drive by the house every day. And I think that it would be wonderful for them to be able to have that extra space up on the third floor. And that, you know, it's, it's a minor for the, the calculation. And I'm hoping that you'll be able to approve it for them. So I'm in favor of it and I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, ma'am. I see one of the drafters of the floor area ratio, max floor area ratio by, bylaws in the audience, but he can choose to say it or not. Others, let's see. Oh, Mr. Johnson, apparently you did choose to say something.
Sorry, my camera was turned off. This is a, a tough one from the point of view of the Floria Ratio Bylaw. Because indeed, the, the objective of the bylaw was to.
Oh, Matt, I'm sorry, Matt, we didn't get your address.
Oh, Matt Johnson, twenty-one Winthrop Street, member of the Select Board and the Liaison, the Select Board Liaison to the zoning board of appeals, but speaking just on my own behalf. And former member of the planning board where I presented the Floria Ratio Bylaw at town meeting. So the, the objective of this bylaw indeed was to prevent mansionization. And so really, when we think about that, we, we do think about five thousand square foot houses. Though I have to say that the emphasis was on new development. So, you know, this, this is a tough case. Because I think in, in prior cases where there has been a exception, you know, a, a special permit granted, a waiver, if you will, of the Floria Ratio, it's been in more modest sized houses, I believe. And, you know, it has been in very tight circumstances. This is a case where, you know, it's hard to make, it, it's hard to say that there's no reasonable alternative when you have a house this large. On, on the other hand, I think that there has also been a compelling case made that, you know, this is existing family making this change for their own needs, having lived in the house for some period of time. The amount of, of extension is very modest. And, you know, while I think, as you pointed out, there are ways to literally avoid it by, you know, doing a six foot seven ceiling and so forth, that they are kind of unreasonable burdens to be, you know, placed on, on the owner when, you know, there is a better, better alternative in this case. So I, I am sympathetic, but I also do understand, you know, that, yeah, indeed. The, the goal of the bylaw was to say, hey, you know, we have these very big houses on relatively small lots. And they do create a density, you know, that is, is imposing. And that we did purposely make the finding criteria a, a very strict one of no reasonable alternative, just so, you know, there would be very few exceptions. So that's where we, that's where I, all I can state at this stage. And I think, have there only been like four exceptions granted in the years since? Three or four?
Two, maybe, two.
I can, I can only think of two.
Yeah, and, and anything, what we hear in recent planning board activity is that we were not ambitious enough in establishing the limits on the Floria Ratio. And there's still a lot of concern about the, the size of the structures relative to their lot size in residency in particular. So just food for thought.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Other comments? Okay. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I think we're back to the board. I think we're back to the board. We're actually back to the board.
You know, you know, I think, I think they, I see three prongs in the, in the bylaw, you know, the, the reasonable alternative analysis, you know, the desire relief without substantial detriment. The intended purpose of the bylaw. You know, I, I think it's easier to get there on the detriment to the neighborhood. You know, I think the sort of modest change to the massing here is certainly not detrimental. And I think we've got positive feedback from the neighbors. You know, the intent and purpose of the bylaw, you know, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for expounding on that. You know, again, I think this, this was envisioned to, more to, to stop new large homes from being plunked on these little lots versus, you know, where there's a house already there and a, a, almost a minimalist increase that, that nips over the line. That, that's consistent with a couple of instances, I think this board in the past has found inappropriate to grant, grant this relief. But I think Mr. Johnson hit it on the head when he, when he noted that those, those past instances were in much smaller houses where the space was tighter. And, and I just kind of struggle with, I think, Jim, you, you referred to it earlier in your comments. You know, and on a, on a sort of gross generalization or level here. Right, that this is close to a six thousand square foot house. And, you know, how, how do we get there on the, on the reasonable alternatives standard that we have to find here? You know, I, I think there was some very helpful detail provided on, you know, the, the, the reason that we're kind of focused on that, that front box of the house versus some of the other space. And I, I, I think, you know, there, there are houses with this level of square footage where there, there may be more flexibility. And, you know, for, for the purpose that the family wants to achieve here, and a worthy one it is. I, you know, I, I tend to agree that, you know, you're just kind of looking at that front box. And there is less kind of room to maneuver in there. And certainly, when you, when you look at that third floor on its own, I think there were several alternatives thought through and, and good reason for why they didn't work. Given, you know, the slope of the roof, the, the kind of tighter spaces up there. You know, so I, 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 I think that we may have a path to get there. And, and be consistent with the, the few exceptions we've granted in the past. I, I, I think, other than the overall size of the house, we're, we're sort of in that same. We're in that same category where I think we can, we can keep the, the exceptions limited here. But I'd be interested what the, the rest of the board is thinking.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, I, I, I do tend to agree with Ravi. Just wanna maybe go in a bit of a different direction. I think that Mr. Johnson mentioned is that this bylaw was put in, into place to make sure that there are no new homes were built that were in access of an FER. I think here is a, you have an existing room, an existing house that with, with existing family living in it that wants to continue living in, in there. It's not on a speculative basis that this is, this is going to be built. And it's, it's, it's an adjustment of of what they currently have. And it's not just a bump out, just a little bump out of the existing house. I think there is a bit more of a reorganization happening within the house. And as a result, just quite, quite a substantial reorganization. There is, there just happens to be a little bump out that, that is quite minimized. And, and, and I think that is, is, I, that to me is also, also important that it's just a result of of some major and some more major work and, and, and the resulting in a, in a small increase in the FER. So that's a so that, that is not necessarily, you know, going to the to the three points that, that Ravi mentioned, but it's a little bit more overarching that it, I think it's, it's the intended bylaw is, is, I think is, is met here.
One of the, Mr. Mello, thank you. Oh, you have more? Sorry. So, so Mr. Mello, could you, or somebody put up that third floor drawing again? And one of the things I gather here, and I, I think I may be not reading this right, is that if, but if you could kind of show me in the third floor, it doesn't matter proposed or current because it's more or less the same. What's, what, what is the, what is the sort of box where you would say the ceiling is normal height?
Or this, this dash line here, here, that represents the kind of full ceiling height location. So six foot eight is, is actually somewhere right about here. We're just squeaking these doors in just under the six foot eight here to get a full door height.
And so that, so that you have, if I look back at the third floor existing one, then that dash line in the middle of the bath floor and in the middle of closet is where you start to lose the height of the ceiling. I know you're picking it up in the dormer, in the new one, but you're picking up the, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we're actually shifting. In order to get this access, we have to, we have to grow this hall back this way to get the door through here that we show there. So we're pushing, pushing the door as close to that slope as we can to be able to both get into the bedroom and get into the bathroom.
But because of the dormer, right, the, you have more height in the bathroom and in the new bathroom than you would have in that like closet four and the old.
Right.
And the old existing set.
Correct, correct. As you, as, if you tried to work within this area to the left of the dash in the existing, you know, you, you can, you can maybe stand here and your shoulders sort of touching, right? You're getting close to that, that sort of six foot height where your head's kind of bumping. So you really have a very limited, limited box here to be able to work within, to fit all the program you need to in the bathroom.
I mean, I'm, I, I, I think I'm going along the theme of the fact that I do think the alternatives are the issue. And one of the alternatives, one of the reasons that you have fewer alternatives here is that you have such a slope on the roof in all sorts of different ways and configurations. Quite an interesting roof, actually, but it slopes a lot of different ways. Sort of the opposite of the thing that I've mentioned before, which is that, you know, if you built a house, we had, we had a house that we, a, a proposed house, we looked at that, you know, the, the floor area ratio. This was not a for, for the maximum floor ratio. This is, this is for the gross floor ratio for a non-conforming lot. But they, you know, they proposed a two-story, essentially a two-story atrium, a room that was sort of two stories. And the floor space was not actually that big because it's one dimensional. But the massing, as it would appear to the neighbors, was quite large because you had the sort of twenty foot ceiling, this is the, or eighteen foot ceiling. This is actually the opposite of that. This is a situation in which there's a, a lot of the floor here, which is a, a lot of the floor space, which is at here and six foot eight ceilings and in the area over the garage, it's at a smaller height and so forth. Which make it, which really sort of, they both, I think, tend to limit what you can do. But they also tend to make me, as the neighbors have pointed out, that there's, this is not, you know, this isn't as, as a huge appearing house as it, as it might be if you had a six thousand square foot house with, you know, ten foot, or nine foot ceilings all the way throughout it, it would be very large indeed.
If, if I may note as well with the alternatives, the, you know, because of the slope of this roof below and the slope of this roof, we, we weren't really able to take this dormer face and move it back at all. Because the sills of these windows then would be in conflict with the main roof there. So we did, we did also look at, could we, could we pull this dormer face inboard at all to the right here? And that, that also wasn't gonna let us get really reasonable. inboard at all to the right here? And that that also wasn't gonna let us get really reasonable windows into that dormer on the exterior.
I think that in we that one of the other ones that we did approve was a situation, it was a smaller house. It it had two different things. It was a smaller house, somewhat smaller house. It it was already in excess of the far, so it was all right, you know, it's like our first discussion this evening where the nonconformity was already there and is it is it slight, it was slightly more nonconforming. But, you know, one of the aspects that I think was important from from learning from that was that they had presented a number of alternatives. And the design that they had come up with was actually probably more attractive to the on this, because they were taking out a flat roof and a few other things. It was actually probably more in keeping with the neighborhood than than the design that they started with. And I think I walked into this discussion thinking that we were going to be very, very, very tough for us to grant this special permit. I I I think that it's been very, very helpful, Mr. Mello in particular, to be able to point out all of the various alternatives and thoughts and other things that you did going through it. I don't, I don't think there was ever a question in my mind that it was a detriment to the neighborhood. I mean, it's obviously a small dormer out the back of the house, very much in keeping with the property. So I thought that if you could, you know, I I still believe if you can overcome the test of saying there was no other reasonable alternative that you rather quickly, once you can get over that test, you rather quickly can solve the rest because you're not adding much to the mass. The neighbors have weighed in, but even without the neighbors weighing in, it's quite clear that it's not a substantial change to the look and feel of the house. So I think based on that, I don't know how we're thinking. Fellow board members, but I mean, I I I I'm inclined to let this one go. I'm gonna ask the building commissioner if we're gonna make his life more difficult with this situation, how you're thinking about what you're seeing in town and and other issues as you you may see people coming in and we we unfortunately you know, we're we're definitely, uh, Mr. Doing, we're we're obviously, you know, have to think about how this how this plays with the rest of the community. Ray, any thoughts?
No, I mean, I just told the applicant, uh, the architect when they're applying for this, that they have to strongly make a case to the board because it is a difficult decision for you. Don't like, say, I think you've only granted two previously. As you said, smaller additions. Obviously, we're not letting the new constructed houses exceed the F A R. So, um, to Matt Johnson's point, that's probably more in line with bylaws for new construction. So, um, but it's the board's decision to make. So I'll go on it back at you, Jim.
That's all right. We can take it.
I know you can.
We get that massive amount, we get paid for serving on this board. All right, well, I'm I'm, uh, I actually am persuaded. I must say, I didn't come into this meeting persuaded, but Mr. Mello, thank you very much. You did a, you know, very good job. And I think you guys Mr. Doing, you you've really thought this through. Um, and I think that um, I had not really appreciated both the lack of area in the over the garage area and the slope issues in the in the house. And I think that that makes this a tougher case. And I think you've done a pretty good job of trying to minimize it. Even down to the fact, um, Mr. Mello, that the, you know, you've thought about whether you could move the dorm or not out as far, which would have, which would have reduced it, but you ran into roof problems, so.
Yeah, and I I think, uh, I'm in agreement to, and I think a couple other points that got me over the hump here are, you know, we, I think we kind of gave a little bit of a roadmap in our previous exceptions. Where, you know, this application kind of hits those same points, which is one, there are some unique characteristics to the house that that play into why going over the max far is kind of the only reasonable way to achieve, you know, getting a getting a usable bedroom space for, you know, a fifteen-year-old daughter up on the that third floor. And, you know, the other one is kind of minim minimizing how much you go over the far when you when you do look at that alternative. And I think I've heard enough from from Mr. Mello here that, you know, really, this this was kind of the minimum bump out you needed to to make all the pieces work in in the design, you know, and and I don't think that the the plans are are taking a square inch more than they they probably need to to get this done. So so I think they are minimizing you know, the the extra square feet they're asking for here.
You okay?
I'm 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 fine. I'm in a in in agreement with with all of you and especially the needed the, um, what was very clear in in the argument, I think, was the fact that the dormer couldn't be moved back, that this was the line that the dormer had to be at. Um, and I think that was, that was, I think, in my mind crucial.
Okay. Ravi, are you?
Sure, a motion to approve the special permit under section six point two point thirteen, eleven point six of the zoning bylaw to construct a ninety-three square foot dormer uh, over the maximum floor area ratio by sixty-six square feet at three fourteen Thero Street. Now with the findings that, uh, there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, that we're not derogating from the intended purpose of six thirty, six point uh, two point thirteen of the bylaw and that you know, there's, there's been a thorough thorough presentation of the alternatives here and so we we find that there really aren't any reasonable alternatives to to achieve the goal of what the the homeowners are trying to do here. Uh, and so that a literal application of this bylaw would would be unreasonable. Uh, of course, the special permit findings, I think, are are pretty straightforward here, but the the advantages outweigh the detriment to the town, community or neighborhood here.
Second. All right, no further discussion, uh, Mr. Faia.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith, I thank you very much. Thank you for a very nice presentation. Appreciate the neighbors' input. Uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, it's useful to have your historical knowledge to to add to the discussion. Ray, uh, we really appreciate the fact that you dug out those other approvals so that we had a good roadmap. So that was really wonderful. So thanks to all of you and good luck on on your on your addition.
Thank you very much to the board. We really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for your careful consideration. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I think we have we we received a email today that I don't have right in front of me from Elizabeth, but we're, but it's, it has to do with a extension of a special permit with respect to a property which, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna blank on this. Hopefully, I'm gonna get it in front of me here pretty soon. Yes, six X Winthrop Street. This was a permit application request. It's been extended a couple of times. I would say the my understanding from Elizabeth's memo is that it has uh, they've gotten some permits that they need and that probably the principal reason that this has not been built yet is due to the pandemic, which is is probably the principal excuse for almost everything that doesn't get done. But a very good one, um, so so a lot better than war, which we also have as an excuse, unfortunately. So anything, Ray, that you could help add to this?
Honestly, Jim, I'm not that familiar with, I didn't realize they were even applying for the extension, so I don't have any knowledge of what the extension was, why they even requested it.
Okay.
I have the request.
I know, I know they originally had some funding issues, uh, state funding issues, which you go through the cycles, yearly cycles of the state, and that's why it was extended once and twice before, I believe.
And now they have their funding, I believe.
Yeah.
And now they've, now they're just looking for another year.
I did, and the original permit was from twenty seventeen and got, you know, it was valid for three years.
Right. All right. I gathered from Elizabeth's email to us that she's in favor of this, so um, I don't see any reason not to. I think this is a project. I mean, only only other people on the whole phone here is a resident of Winthrop Street, but I'm gonna not gonna put him on the spot this time. So in any event.
I'd have to recuse myself in any case.
Okay, well, there you go. So can I get a motion?
I will make a motion to extend for an additional year, uh, the comprehensive permit for the assisted living facility at six X Winthrop Street. Good finding that the applicant has made a reasonable request for a one-year time extension.
And I think we we have to find the the, there's no change to the project as proposed there to the site, right? Is that, Ray, are you aware, right, as they were changing it up?
Yeah, I would have seen it. I mean, yeah, Elizabeth would have definitely notified me if it changes.
Okay. Then, uh, second.
Okay, uh, for the discussion now, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Faia.
Hi.
Mr. Smith, I, all right, thank you very much. I think the only other, oh, we have minutes. I did review the minutes. I was not at one of the meetings, but I thought they looked fine. Did you guys have an opportunity to look at minutes?
I, um, I I reviewed them and I did not have any comments.
Ravi, did you have any, find anything?
I had a couple typos that Heather has fixed, so
Okay.
I don't think they need to be spelled out, but I I'm good with the minutes.
Okay, so somebody give me a motion for
And move move the minutes, uh, from the December ninth and January thirteenth, uh, meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Faia.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith, I, those are approved. Last item on the agenda, I believe, is the continuing challenge of deciding when do we go back to in-person meetings. So, uh, I don't know, uh, Matt, if you have any insight as to what the board is doing and other things are doing, but I think
Yeah, so the select board's already back in person uh, have been for a couple of meetings now. Uh, but the, you know, as far as the Commonwealth is concerned, uh, the current rules uh, go until at least July fifteenth. So you do have the option of continuing to operate, uh, through remote until then, at least, and we don't know what other, you know, legislative action may take place in the interim, but, um, that's how it stands right now. So it's really kind of up to you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that help. Um, so I I'll start and say that I'm a member of a number of different boards, um, committees, et cetera, et cetera. I am most all of them are not not going remote quite yet. I mean, not going in person quite yet, and I think part of that is because they were all fired up to go in person in, say, February or whatever, and then Omicron hit and everybody was back into it again, so that it was sort of a disruption and people felt it was difficult for planning. I'm all of those people are sort of targeting more like late June, late June meetings I'm seeing go in, so personally, I would like to probably let us go at least through the May meeting. Still remotely, but I'm I'm sort of, I'm I'm not, I'm not, don't feel strongly, so love to hear the board's thoughts.
I I'll I'll jump, jump in there, uh, Jim. I I'm actually totally in agreement with you on on this. I I'd love to go back in person. At the moment, I'm it just feels just a little bit too early still for me. You know, and and, you know, the the meetings, they have been, I mean, it's been pretty effective. I I thought tonight was a was a good example of it that, I mean, we are effective and and nobody has to travel and that's a good thing. But it's just really, there's something special about having a meeting in person. And then I would like to get back there, but as you said, it's 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 still a little bit early in the, as unlike just what we, we were ready to go go back in in the fall in person. And then we got sort of called back on that, so I've got that same hesitation now that you know, I'd like to be in person, but not just yet, I think.
Robbie?
Yeah, I agree. Today was probably the first time where I felt I might actually be comfortable going back in person, but that doesn't mean I think we need to rush. Uh, I think, you know, June sounds appropriate and, you know, to Theo's point, I was a little worried about tonight's meeting because the some of the plans were a little confusing, that it'd be good to have somebody be able to, you know, try to laser pointer at a screen for us, but I thought that the applicant was able to do that extremely effectively with, you know, whatever on-screen pointer he was using. So I agree, we we can effectively do this remotely and I think giving it another couple of months is is the way to go.
And potentially given, given that the the next meeting's agenda is rather bulky, I
Yeah, right, yeah, which means it could be, could mean lots of people in the small space.
Right, right, right. I'm for a long time.
Right.
So The legal has went out today for April to be remote, so it would have to be May anyways, the earliest.
Okay, good, good.
Well, yeah, I think what I'm hearing is let's w- once the, remind me when the May meeting is.
I think it's the twelfth.
May twelfth, yep.
Let's let's, uh, let's target going back for the June meeting, first for in-person for the June meeting. Subject to the fact that the Commonwealth could change its mind, as Mr. Johnson pointed out, and tell us we have to go back earlier. That's, Matt, that's a Commonwealth issue, not not contradiction.
Well, no, it's not that they would change their mind until you have to go back earlier. It's that they might extend the opportunity to hold. So no, they've already authorized through, uh, July fifteenth.
Okay.
Um, and this is, you know, it is at a Commonwealth level. It's really relative to open meeting law.
Right. Well, let's, uh, I I I would say let's try to do, uh, April, May in person, I excuse me, video or remote. In person, I, excuse me, video or remote, um, we'll reevaluate as we go along. Um, but I would think that maybe we target June to come back. That works for everyone.
I, I think that's, I, I, I think I would need to have a reminder the day of the meeting. It's like, you gotta go into town.
Well, I've, I mean, I've, I've handled these now from different parts of the world and other things, and it's actually, I mean, there's a. I find the zoning meetings, um, are actually pretty effective remote, because people are, you know, the meeting spaces. It's easier to hear, people are, um, you know, I think, able to come in and go out. I think you get more people probably than you might get, because, you know, it's easier to come in, but, but I agree, we gotta get back. Some point.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, Heather, anything else on this agenda?
No, that's it.
Okay, with that, uh, next meeting is on, as we were just talking about, April fourteenth. Big agenda, so look forward to seeing everyone there. All right, me and Jordan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks all.
Take care.
Night, everyone.
Bye.